...the work session to order. The meeting is being recorded and will be posted on the county's YouTube channel in your future. It's no cost for public hearing or full terms of discussion. However, before I forget, since Stradall is here and he always asks about correspondence related to environmental things, the only things that we have been notified lately was on June 5th, a couple of gallons of hydraulic fluid due to a hydraulic hose burst went into the reservoir and that was contained and dealt with. And then was it this morning? No, yesterday.
It was yesterday.
A small amount of asphalt spilled out of a tanker on Parker Street. See where we're at? The only thing new on the agenda for today to discuss would be Commissioner Carlson talking about the Grunderville landfill closure.
So all I'm doing today is essentially officially presenting these three proposals. Been working with Dan Glott to get multiple proposals for environment and there are extra copies in case anybody really is dying to read about environmental stuff. Proposals in order to have a consultant work with us in order to produce the documentation necessary to officially shut down the Grunderville landfill. The landfill has been in a state of post-closure for almost 30 years and essentially after multiple meetings with DEP and then also talking with different consultants, basically came to the conclusion that two things have to happen. One is all of like documentation needs to be put together about the environmental state of the site in order to get a green light from DEP to move forward with the closure plan, which involves removing any remnants of the former landfill from the site. And then once that's done, we would get a closure certification from DEP that would then state that we no longer have any responsibility to the site. We've talked with seven, probably seven or eight agencies. Three have given us proposals. I think that there'll probably be, might be a couple more. I'm presenting these because I think that in this three, there's a, I think that we have a favorite. And essentially what Dan is doing now this week is going to be basically checking references and then also checking with Bob Carlson, the chairman of the Solid Waste Authority, to see what they're comfortable with as far as the proposals. And then between Dan checking references and then also their recommendations is essentially which proposal we would go with. Still have to check with Mr. Carlson and then also check with some things legally because I'm not 100% sure yet how we move forward with this as we will essentially be spending money out of the closure fund, which is managed by the Solid Waste Authority. So there may be a need to call a special meeting of the Solid Waste Authority for them to pass a resolution authorizing the hiring of the agency. The three proposals that I'm presenting are Tetra Tech, Moody and Langen. All of these are very reputable. Moody is one that's had some experience with the landfill previously. These other two are large firms that have a great deal of experience dealing with both landfill closure and environmental remediation. Langen is the most expensive. It's $19,850 and then they also say that there's some extra stuff they can do for us with this US EPA, ISRP grant funding. And so we're kind of looking into that. The second lowest is Tetra Tech at $9,800 and then Moody's is the cheapest at $4,300. The reason that these, and I would assume that if we got two or three more proposals that the rates would vary pretty dramatically and a lot of that has to do with nobody, everybody's kind of coming up with their own way of dealing with this. The setup that we have is very unique and so it's very difficult for everybody to pitch how much time it's going to take, what they're going to have to do because a huge part of what they're going to do is research test results and then also do some stuff, tests on site and then also look through DEP. They're going to have to go and go through DEP's archives to look at information in their setup and it's, I think it's hard for all of them to kind of anticipate what that's going to, what time, kind of time that's going to require. Also, there's varying theories on how they're going to address this or how we're going to address this together with, you know, to work with DEP. Right now, I'm personally leaning towards Tetra Tech just because in the conversations that we had with them, they had the most, they seemed to be the most knowledgeable and had the clearest sense of how to address this issue. Moody's, although it is the lowest, we really, I really personally feel like they, I don't, I'm not sure, because from my opinion, whoever's, whoever we work with is going to be through till the end, including putting together the plan in order to cap all the wells and shut everything down. I have concerns to some degree. They're very, they've done very good work and that's why we're checking references with them, especially with Mr. Carlson and others, to see if they, if they feel like they're, they can really do what's necessary for the, for the project. My hope is, is to have this wrapped up, you know, within the next couple of months. We have a site visit scheduled with the ANF. I'm not sure if you guys were, I don't think you were included on it, but I'm going to forward that to both of you so that you can attend. If you'd like to basically walk through the site. We're doing everything we can to be as transparent with the ANF as possible. Obviously with the question of environmental liability, there, you know, there are a lot of concerns, so we want to try to address those in as clear and professional a fashion as we can. And so far, we've had very, very good conversations with them, so we're, you know, through sharing information and then working collaboratively, I think that we can, we can get this to where it needs to be in order to get it closed.
I have a question.
Sure.
Doesn't your county code say that you must, you have to take the lowest bid?
No.
How do you get around it where townships can't, they have three bids in front of them? Their code says that they have to take the lowest bid.
As we said last night, the county code does not require us to do that when it's professional service and this.
Okay.
We will do it as professional service.
What he said. Yeah, with the, like with the professional services and stuff and engineering and some of the other things, when they're, especially when they're producing a report, we can, you know, and my thing is with this job is that there's enough, that this is important enough, you know, especially long-term liability wise, that it should be done right and that whoever we hire regardless of price should have, we should feel 110% that they're competent and capable of handling it. Because this isn't just about getting the site shut down, it's about making sure that 20 years from now, there's no surprises for anybody, so.
When it comes to like travel or something, absolutely, we go with the lowest.
Yep.
But when you're dealing with reports, it's essentially like hiring a short-term employee, right? You wouldn't hire someone that's, you know, to do, I don't know, a complicated job if they have no experience with it.
Like whenever we get this, the site shutdown, we'll, we would bid out who does the work on closing it and that would be a bid situation where we'd probably end up going with the lowest bidder barring that we feel like they're incompetent. And there, there are, you know, ways, you know, with the bidding setup, if you can prove or you feel confident that the, the agency can't handle it, you can.
Yeah, I understand. We have the same thing, but we just.
And in this case, and in this case, also I would state that the county is not hiring these people. The Solid Waste Authority is hiring them. We're coordinating the effort. So they're comfortable with it. We're just making sure that it's, that we're setting everything up so that it happens. They're, they're very interested in getting it closed. I just don't, I think that this is an issue of the will to have it done and making it happen, so.
Okay. Any questions for Commissioner Carlson? All right, we have the board there, right?
I don't know.
Thanks for the update. Any public comments at this time on any subject? Mr. Able?
I don't know if you're tracking, I'm sure you already issued a spring brine on the dirt roads. I'm just wondering if this board has taken a position on, as you know, there's a ban at the moment based on some litigation by Warren County Citizen that's preventing brine being spread throughout the state. I'm just wondering if this board has taken a position on whether or not you're going to support the legislature's efforts to pass a bill, which is in the Senate right now. I think the House passed it last week, that would allow brine to be spread again, basically under older rules and lower standards.
I haven't taken, I don't know about anybody else, I haven't taken a position on it. I'm just learning about it now. We had a conversation about it at the Cog last week. I wasn't aware even, well, I shouldn't say that. I remember seeing an email that I got either from DEP or from, or from CCAP talking about it. Because I think the concern was is that there was radioactive material in the, in the brine and that, and everybody kind of goes, well, how does, how does radioactive, what do they get out of a nuclear power, like when certain chemicals are mixed and there's other things that can create radioactivity, like or, you know, because that's one of the issues with the, the water that's discharged into the river from treatment plants and stuff like that is the level of radioactivity. So I'd have to look at that and then from my perspective, whether I would, you know, take a stance on it one way or the other. I know that the municipal officials are very much interested in it, involved in it. I don't, you know.
There seems to be, this bill seems to be pushed along pretty quickly at the moment. I don't think a lot of citizens knew about it, knew where it was and what it was intended to do. But there's also a lot of recent and emerging science around this issue. This is a national issue. Pennsylvania is in the spotlight. I think there is an article, I just read in Newsweek magazine about it. So it's, it's capturing national attention. It would just seem to me that we ought to evaluate the science before we rush headlong into some kind of political solution. Some of the science that's coming out is pretty alarming. In particular, the water that comes out of conventional wells, the brine that comes out of conventional wells is now considered fairly similar to the deep wells water that's coming out of unconventional wells. Contains similar amounts of uranium nuclei. And the fact that we're considering spreading that on county roads, just from a public health perspective, seems to be the kind of thing we want to exercise some prudence about. And also the bill that's in the Senate and the one that passed the House has a provision that restricts local ordinances from taking any kind of action on this. So Warren County would be prohibited in the future from restricting it.
Like in state, like state efforts to clean the roads, like to, to spread brine?
Right. And other things related to you up there, since there's no local control. Who needs our licenses?
Townships, a lot of them don't like putting brine on their dirt roads because when they, in my case, which was late, when you do road inspection where brine's been used, you find a lot of mushy spots, which requires additional road work. In Blake, it was never used and was never recommended to use. I can't speak for Blacktop because Blake never used brine, but I think Bendot does to a point. But it does soften the dirt roads. And a lot of people think by putting the brine on, it keeps the dust down. If you read in the, in one of the newspapers, the Saturday, I can't think of the name, one township is willing to charge individuals for using MC-70 to control the dust. A lot of people think brine doesn't, but brine ruins dirt roads, as far as I'm concerned.
On my part, I haven't taken a position in doing the research yet and I'm not going to probably spend a lot of time on it because that's not really within our purview and I'm working on so many other projects, I'm just not going to be able to spend any dedicated time on researching it.
I would just suggest that this could have a significant impact on the mountain biking community, which is an increasingly large economic concern here in the county. We've done a lot to increase the amount of mountain biking here. Because this is a national issue and because a lot of people come here and mountain bike, not only from Pennsylvania, but elsewhere, this could have a serious impact on mountain biking in the county and this station.
How would it affect mountain biking?
Well, because I'm not going to mountain bike on a road that I know has been burning.
I see.
And I don't think a lot of mountain bikers will.
Any other public comment on that issue? Then are there any other topics of discussion that you wish to bring before the board?
I have a couple items.
Okay.
One is just informational. I just wanted to share. So last month, May 4th, we did a mailing for our tax set. We had 1,300 parcels, which is the same amount as last year. But this year I decided to change the notice up a bit. On the first page is the old notice that we did last year. If you go to the next page, changed up a little bit, we actually add on there a payoff for the month of May. So if you go to the first one, there was no payoff. It was just a grant total of, of selling the setup. So we had a lot of phone calls, a lot of questions, a lot of confusion. We updated it this year so you had a payoff, so you didn't just send in a payment. And also we added the website, but it's not just the Warren County website. I put it direct to tax claim page, so they can type that in and they'll see a button that says pay to link the taxes. So by doing that, last year we had 35 online payments. This year we have 103. So a huge increase. So we're hoping by doing that, we'll have less traffic, we actually did have less traffic, less calls in the office, but we're hoping that in the July, September timeframe, we'll have less research to do because those people have paid your taxes.
Well, the other thing is, is it's more like, I mean, otherwise you have foot traffic, but there's also people that might not pay.
They'll just print it off and say, oh, I'll call later. Three months later, you know.
Great idea.
Yeah. So then, I hope it's less newspaper news. Just wanted to share that with everybody.
Great idea.
And the other one here is concerning a repository sale. So on the first page there you see is a current listing, which I think all know is $230 or more is the minimum bid for repository property. On page two, I just didn't release it yet, so I haven't given exactly the public yet, but I would like to have the minimum bid not start at $250 for the new properties that came from the judicial sale. I want to start on that cost that we've accrued. I don't think it's fair to the taxpayers that were, you know, covering these properties and selling for $250 bucks, they're losing money. So if we start on that cost, we can at least recoup our costs and then possibly get, you know, some taxes paid on top of it.
And just to be clear, because we discussed this at the redevelopment task force meeting, was this is just an administrative decision. The $250 is an arbitrary amount.
Yeah, it was just something that was decided and it just kept going. It's really a discretionary, the tax court bureau's had a bid amount. So I'd like to have the minimum bid be the cost that we've accrued.
And when you say cost that's accrued, what's included in that?
So that would be mailing, postings, newspaper ad, research for the judicial sale, all that stuff. I'd like to have this be the minimum bid through the year and then come January 1st next year, we can lower it. I haven't decided exactly, we'd lower it to maybe 800, 500, and then we can go from there.
When, okay, so when you say lower to what?
So it would be the minimum bid for the, this whole entire year, so from, we have our judicial sale in May, May, June timeframe, have the minimum bid be the cost until last day of the year and then January 1st, we can lower that.
Oh, I see. So that, like in a tiered fashion, Tetra Tech and Vice purchase?
Yep.
Yeah, because, yeah, depending upon how interested people are in a property is where that bid ends up, that, you know, the 250 bucks.
Lots of people play the game too. They'll sit up at judicial sale and know when they can come down here and.
Bid on it.
Bid $250.
Or considerably less than whatever it's at.
Yeah.
This at least sets a minimum bar.
So I'd like to have this released July 1st and they can make their bids starting now. That suitable for us?
Well, the only concern really with this is, is that fewer properties will be bid on. I mean, that's essentially the real only concern. I mean, everything else is pretty straightforward.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, there's a chance that, you know, they won't sell as many through the repository list, but we're holding on to that minimum bid and through the year, and then January 1st next year, we'll be lowering it down, so.
And essentially otherwise, then the, essentially you get where taxpayers are essentially subsidizing the sale otherwise, on properties that haven't, that people haven't been able to maintain.
I think it's a great idea to recoup our costs if at all possible.
And the tax bill that comes out in August, wouldn't be collectible no matter what, even if there's a bid at $250 or a minimum bid. That makes sense.
Oh, you got to choke colleagues thinking.
Gentlemen, why let the taxpayers of this county pay when you have a bid at $250? Set it at 500 or 800. Recoup your expenses and don't push it on to the taxpayers. If somebody wants that property and he sets a price of 800, that's guaranteeing the county getting their money back that he has invested in and just leave it at 800. If you want the property, or if I wanted the property, $800, that ain't bad. I'll take it. That's, keep it at a figure so that people know, because the old game will start. Oh, he's got it at 800, but around December, he's going to take it back down to 250. I'll just wait it out. No, keep it at 800. Let them people that want those properties and are playing that property game pay the full price so that your expenses are covered and the taxpayers aren't at, as half to pay for. I'm for keeping it at 800 and I want it to be, let it be known.
Any other public comment?
I would just say that I agree with, with Commissioner Morrison and that I think it was a very good idea and that I think it's something that we should do.
Okay, and yes, since we're.
Thank you very much for bringing this to our attention, Phil.
I've been asked to speak at the school board meeting tonight on the map of the burn in BMW and the school endeavor that they are working towards for the homeless veteran housing.
I'm glad that you brought that up because that's something that I was going to ask that, we had sent one letter already, but now they're kind of having like a more major discussion. Can we draft another letter, like within the next four hours to give to Ed, to take to the school board in order to support this initiative?
Aren't there two conflicting initiatives? Isn't there the, the one that you're, you're after the same building as the fiber people, right?
Uh, yeah, no, that one.
I would just approach today to go up and ask if I would be at a school board meeting to say a few words on behalf of the homeless veteran.
Yeah, I'd really like to, I'd like to support that initiative. Or do you want to just not?
We can't take any official action on it. If you would like to write a, or whatever support, feel free to and we all can.
Yep. Yeah, just because the, when we had a conversation about it, that sounded like the plans that they had in place were really, they really were going to do something with that property that sounded really exciting.
And my understanding with the conversation I had today, they plan on building a wall so that the head start can stay in the building. From my understanding, that was a concern. They are looking at building a wall so to keep that separated, put a separate entrance in so that the head start can stay in that building and the homeless veterans section would be, they'd have their own entrance.
Yeah, from the pitch that they made, it made a lot of sense what they were trying to do, first of all. Second of all, there were other things aside from just the homeless veterans element. They had some interest in using some portion of that property for local business development and some other things.
And I believe they're going to use part of it for the, their own, well, the club's going to be in there, they're going to house part of the, I don't want to say township to borough.
Yeah, yeah, it makes real sense for that community to take over that.
Also, just a reminder, my office is closed all next week while we're away for training and I'll be out of the office Thursday for a meeting and hearing.
Great. Any other committee or department updates? Very well, I, we kind of, seeing this is more public comments and I'm sure that.
Why, you know.
Any project updates from the commissioners?
Oh, Pam got the, all the locations locked down for the town hall meetings, so we'll be drafting a news release on that and then, and then probably make an announcement sometime this week on the schedule. And then we'll start with planning the setup and everything and the, and the agenda and that. And if anybody has anything they want to add to it or things that they'd like to include, please, you know, forward them to Pam and I.
Okay.
And I thank her for getting that together and no time for that. Very good. And I know we've got other stuff, but.
In the meantime, Commissioner Morrison, have you looked at the agenda for Wednesday's meeting? Anything you want to add? It looked good to me. I didn't have anything more to add. Stradall said, did you?
So you've nailed down the financing for Motorola?
Um, I mean, just, some of it has changed since last time because it's better, it's better offer than it was at our last meeting.
Yeah, because we have that on the agenda for Wednesday, right?
I can't do it until we have the three of us. If you have any questions about it, you all have Dominic's contact information.
Appointment of a fair chaplain, that's a volunteer.
Correct, yes.
Which, which right of way, is that related to bike trail?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that's finally getting some traction again.
Which, which right of way, is that related to bike trail?
Yeah. Yeah, that's finally getting contraction again.
I'm going to be sending you some information because I'd like to sit down and have a conversation about work release and work crews. After the, we're about to finalize our setup for the master gardener program outside. They're very excited to get going on that. And through talking with MAD and then also kind of researching the, the current policies at the prison related to work releases and stuff, I think it would be good to have a conversation. And especially in the ongoing conversations about using inmate labor for municipal efforts, the recycling center and some of those other things. I'd like to have a meeting where we sit down and go over, you know, policy related to that and make sure that we're getting everything out of it that we can, you know, and that the inmates are getting everything out of it that they can. Because we'd really like to expand that, you know, especially in relation to what you were talking about with Loving and some of the other stuff.
Yeah. Yeah, I think it'd be great to invite the commissioners, Sheriff Warden, obviously, Deputy Warden and the Work Release Coordinator.
I was going to have Laura McDon there too. Maybe even the DA and some others to have a conversation with them about it too.
Okay. That'd be great. Okay. Anything schedule wise you all want to raise?
I'm going to be out there, half a day Thursday and Friday in Harrisburg to go meet with some representatives and some other people, partially to talk about projects, including the recycling bit. And then I think next week, I'm pretty much open here and will be working.
I'll travel to Clarion tomorrow for Duxell RC and D.
Next Monday, I will be in Harrisburg all day. I'll be able to call into the work session that Commissioner Morrison and I asked you to run.
Work session next Monday.
Okay. Anything else on the meeting, commissioner's schedule, Sheriff Jethlyn?
Could I have two minutes of commissioner's time with your desk?
Yep.
That's Harrisburg.
All right, there's nothing else to raise. We'll go.